Responders of the city are kept safe and they come home. Please make sure to oversee and watch over our residents' safety as we do the business of the city and in this name we pray, thank you and amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Chris, council, we've got minutes from the March fourth, twenty twenty five work session to approve. Have you had a chance to review the minutes? Entertain a motion on the minutes then.
Your Honor, I move to approve the work session minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty five.
No second.
A motion and a second from Megan. She did.
Well, technically it was one second.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes stand. We've got a few public hearings this evening. First of those is to receive public comment on zoning map amendment to rezone nine oh five south, fifteen hundred east from A one agricultural to PF public facilities. And we're also going to have, he's going to present on both of those right now. We're going to do, he's going to present on number two as well, which is the zoning map amendment to rezone three fifty south and four thirty two south Carter Lane from urban mixed residential to public facilities. Hey. Tyson, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'll start out with some background on this request. Back in two thousand twenty two, Clearfield City rezoned all city park properties to PF Public Facilities. And the general plan for Clearfield City states that the PF zone is appropriate for public buildings, open space, parks, and publicly owned property, as well as other types of uses, but those uses that I just mentioned are the ones that are most applicable to the rezone request tonight. And Clearfield City now is requesting to rezone additional public properties to PF Public Facilities, consistent with the direction taken in two thousand twenty two. Really, the the public facilities zone was identified as the best zone to have for properties such as parks and open space and and even public facilities like the the operations center that the city has. So we're going to go over a few different properties tonight, the the subject properties that are included in the rezone request. We'll start with that top bullet, which is nine oh five south, fifteen hundred east. The current use of the property is it's open space and it's vacant, it's been vacant for decades. The general plan designation for that property is residential. And then the current zoning designation of the property is A one agricultural. So here we've got a couple of different maps. On the left hand side, we've got our general plan map, general plan land use map. And then on the right hand side, the zoning map. You can see the subject property there off of fifteen hundred east is outlined in red. On the left hand side in the general plan map, you can see the the residential land use designation is in yellow. And you can see that surrounding the subject property, there is a lot of residential development, as well as some commercial development to the the west and a little bit to the north. Going over to the zoning map, the subject property you can see is in the A one agricultural zone. There are some properties along fifteen hundred east to the south that share that A one zoning designation. And then there's some other designations surrounding the property as well. For example, we've got the the R three zoning designation, which is a residential multifamily designation. We've got R one O, which is a single family residential zoning designation. And then, like we talked about, the C two zone, which is where we've got some existing commercial properties. With this image, you can just get a better sense of the subject property, sort of an aerial image from up above. You can see the existing single family homes to the south of the subject property, and then some additional residential to the east and to the north, and that commercial that we talked about, just to the west and a little bit to the north of the the property. It's the the size of the property is ten acres. It's got some good potential to be used as a park or an open space or a recreational facility. You've got the canal trail, which runs alongside it on on the south and can provide some some good access into the site. And then these are just a couple of recent photos taken from fifteen hundred east of the property. And then going on to the other properties that are included with the rezone request tonight, three fifty and four thirty two south Carter Lane. The current use of the subject properties varies. One of them is a city park, which was developed with the Lotus Anthem development, and that was turned over to the city. And then also a stormwater basin, which was also finished or is being finished by the the Lotus Development. That has also been turned over to the city. And then some open space that goes along the rail corridor. The general plan designation for these properties is mixed use, and the the current zoning designation is UR, urban mixed residential. So again, we've got the general plan map on the left hand side, and then the zoning map on the right hand side for these properties. You can see the subject properties outlined in red. Looking on on the left hand side, you can see the the rectangular shaped property in the middle of the image. That's where the the city park is, which has been finished. It's in the middle of two different buildings that are part of the Lotus Development. It's about a half acre. And then to the north is where we've got a storm stormwater basin, also meant to be open space and is owned by the city. And then the long rectangular property that goes along the rail corridor is also public property, all within that mixed use, future land use designation. So Clearfield's entire downtown, as designated with the Form Based Code area, all has that mixed use land use designation, and and parks are an important part of that land use designation as well. And then the, looking at the zoning map, you can see that the the subject properties are in the UR zone, which is the urban mixed residential zone, part of our downtown Form Based Code area. You can see that other zones in the area are the UC zone, just across the street from State Street to the east, and then some other public facilities zoned properties on the west side of the the rail corridor. And then here's some images, excuse me, some photos taken recently of of these properties. The top image, you can see the the park that was developed by Lotus, kind of a neat small park. It's got some good amenities. It has a pickleball court. It has a half basketball court. It even has some benches where you can play chess. So that's on my list of things to do. I haven't gotten to it yet, though. Bottom left, you can see the storm basin. This was taken recently. I think they've made some additional improvements since that photo was taken. And then bottom right is that long linear property along the rail corridor. You'll be seeing some more from this property because it's going to be part of the UTA's front runner double tracking, and they'll be using part of that property to do that This is just a citywide parks map so that you can get a sense of all the different parks that we have in Clearfield City, and then also the subject properties in relation to the existing parks. On the east side of I fifteen, just where that blue arrow is pointing, that's the the property off of fifteen hundred east that we talked about first. You'll notice that on the east side of I fifteen, there currently currently we don't have any parks in in that section of the city. And then that second blue cursor is pointing to the the park right in the middle of the the Lotus Development. Not showing on this map is the Tower Park, which is in the Clearfield Station area. That will need to be added. And then in the future, we'll do something very similar with the parks and open space properties that are part of Clearfield Station. We'll bring a rezone request to rezone those to PF Public Facilities. On March fifth, twenty twenty five, the Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval to the Clearfield City Council for the proposed zoning map amendments. And this recommendation was based on the analysis of the staff report and the following findings, which actually I'll I'll go over in a minute. I did want to say that as part of the public hearing, we had some people attend the Planning Commission meeting. They spoke in favor of a future use of parks, recreation, or open space for the property. They did express some concerns about the private road to the north, which goes back to residential properties and just how those details would be worked out if that private road were to have to be used as part of future development of the park. Also received a couple of phone calls just from people calling about the sign, spoke in favor of of parks and open space use for the property, as opposed to a residential use for the property. But yeah, going along with the the findings of the staff report, one, staff finds that the proposed zoning map amendments are consistent with the land use guidelines, goals, and objectives of the Clearfield City General Plan. Two, development of these properties with uses other than those of a public use is inconsistent with the current and future use of the properties as public open spaces. And three, preservation of open spaces and city owned land is vital for current and future residents. And with that, happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, thanks, Tyson. These are two separate public hearings, so we'll go ahead and open the first public hearing regarding nine oh five south, fifteen hundred east. And I think I have a form coming up. Thank you. So Susan Parker.
I'm kind of new still. I just moved into that area two years ago, so I still don't understand the addresses. I'm like, what? Is that my house? Yeah.
You're good.
I live right on nine hundred south in Clearfield. So my house looks right at that that space. I don't have a sidewalk. It's just that road. So and I'm the only house that really does that. The rest of them are kind of apartments like things, but mine's more of the house. Anyway, I just basically thrilled that you're not going to turn it into, please don't turn it into housing. That's lovely. My concern is that our sundown, I'm on the HOA board as well, the sundowners, so medium age there is fairly older, and then you've got the older community, fifty five and up over there. And so my concern is what to develop that space as. And if it's just going to be developed, are we going to have a say as the public in what's developed there, even though we don't really, I mean, we don't own it? My concern is if we put in soccer fields, and then we'll need parking spaces, and then we'll have to have that road open, and then who's going to police that road? And then, you know what I mean? So I'm a little concerned about that. I'd like to see if we're going to have any kind of input from the public on that. And then another thing is the wildlife there. I walk around there every day. I go past those trails all the time. There's fox and, you know, a whole bunch of birds and there's a whole bunch of wildlife in that ten acre. So I'm concerned about what's going to happen to them. And then, yeah, just that it's that road is already busy because both communities use that road, and it's not policed. Who's going to police it, you know, if we open that up? So but I'm I am thrilled that it's going to be an open space if nothing else. So I just wanted to have a say.
Well, thank you. I mean, we appreciate that. I mean, it's been general planned. I mean, we've anticipated that eventually at some point in time it's become a park.
Yeah, when I first moved there or was going to move there, my realtor was like, good news. Good news. It's going to it's going to either stay that way or turn into a park. I was like, but.
And likely, you know, I mean, you asked a good question. Likely, you know, what is our use for, I mean, well, with any park, it's programmed for 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 sports, it's programmed for, you know, activities, things like that.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's the likely outcome. If that if and when that gets to that point, yes, we will have to address parking in regards to that because it is a private road. And so we would have to address parking in a different manner, and it might be the front piece of fifteen hundred that becomes a parking lot.
Yeah.
In order to address that.
Because it's, I know it's for the whole city of Clearfield, but the community around it isn't, you know, we don't have a ton of kids running around, and so it just makes me nervous.
Sure.
You know, I lived across the park before in West Clearfield, and there was issues. There's always going to be issues when you have a park, a public park. So anyway, thank you.
Well, awesome. Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else here to speak regarding this this evening? Okay, seeing no public, no other public comment, I would entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and open public hearing number two, which is regarding three fifty south and four thirty two south Carter Lane, from urban mixed residential to public facilities. Is there anyone here to speak in regards to this one? Okay, seeing no public comment, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Your Honor, seeing no public comment, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Well, that moves us to our our open comment period. I don't have any forms, but I do know that, no? Okay.
I received, I received one.
Oh, okay.
So we have that online version that people can submit them. So it's resident William Rinderneck, and I think it's in relation to the police incident that we had a lot of comment on previously. But it says, it is not rocket science, bill of rights are straightforward, there's simply no excuse. This is something educated people learn in high school. You can't stop anyone without a reasonable articulable suspicion. That means you have to be able to point out with words a specific fact or circumstance that indicates a crime has been, is being, about to be committed. The Supreme Court has ruled over and over that simply walking away from an officer in the absence of a verbal RAS in no way establishes reasonable suspicion. The facts suggest that this officer and his department are simply thugs that prey on innocence. Mr. Mayor, if all is in your court, fix it.
Thank you. I received that same email, so. Okay, if there's no other public comment, then we will move on. And we've got both of those, a couple of other items. Need to consider approval of and consent to my appointment of Danielle Sykes to the Planning Commissioner as a regular member. Danielle's been serving for since twenty twenty four, February twenty twenty four, as an alternate, and we have a vacancy on the Planning Commission now. So after looking through those, it's my recommendation that we move Danielle up from an alternate to a full time, regular member of the Planning Commission with a term expiring February of twenty twenty eight.
Your Honor, I move that we approve and consent to your appointment of Danielle Sykes as a regular member of the Planning Commission with a term expiration date of February twenty twenty eight, and authorize your signature to any necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that the feedback I've gotten from from staff and also just knowing Danielle personally, she's phenomenal, and I'm excited to give her the opportunity to serve as a regular member.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Item number five is to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten rezoning the property located at nine oh five south, fifteen hundred east approximately, from A one agriculture to PF. Counsel, any further discussion on this one? Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I guess my only real question would be, as we're taking on this as a public facility and eventually potentially a park, I guess the reality is that, is there considerations that this park could also work as a work in the factor of defensible green space for wildfire risk? And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because of the fact that the matter is that across the state of Utah, we've been dealing with issues of home insurance coverage being dropped due to wildfire risk. And I could show everyone the wildfire risk map right now, the moderate risk that does exist around that area. And so I'm totally in favor of making this, making some of these areas more defensible green space and more and park orientated for the sake of making sure the homeowners and their insurance rates, they still sustain coverage. So in in that, like, I'm just kind of just asking that question, putting it out there because, like, I, like I said, I really do favor that. But I really want our park, as we do this and we explore this, I just really want this to be more of a scientific and thoughtful application and not just kind of like this spot, spot, spot that we're kind of doing right now. And so my my main question is, like, will we be able to handle this per acre and and things like that? Is are we able to be able to deal with the growth of this space as of right now as we're doing this? Or will it just sit until we develop it?
Yeah, it'll sit until we develop, but we're already maintaining it.
Okay.
It's already our, well, yeah, ma- maintaining. I mean, it's it's open space and it's a, yeah, it's the trail around it, you know, we is is ours as well. We maintain that.
Okay, good to know. All right.
And from a wildfire perspective, in its current more or less wild state, which gets attention a couple times a year, if it does become a developed park, then that would be much more defensible in terms of of wildfire risk.
Good, good to know, because like, yeah, that that's just my main thing about is we started approaching these green spaces and these public facilities, and we started doing this, that the mindfulness of trying to make sure that we're, as much as we're putting in a pocket park or a park for people to use that, we're thinking about defensible green space so we can keep homeowners' insurance rates at a manageable level. I don't want insurers to pull out of Clearfield because they feel like we have too much risk. So that's all. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Not not question, but a comment. I just want to commend our our friends and residents who came out to to speak and kind of show some interest in what's going on in that property. The question was asked, will the opportunity arise to give some feedback? And you guys did a phenomenal job of getting here at day one for that feedback. So it's it's just heartening for me to see that. And there's valid valid considerations that were raised, and I just look forward to continuing the conversation with you guys when and if this parcel gets developed. So thank you.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten rezoning the property located at approximately nine oh five south, fifteen hundred east from A one agriculture to PF Public Facilities, and amending the Clearfield City zoning map accordingly, and authorize your signature to any necessary documents.
Second.
Oh, you got me, Dakota, but this was.
We have a motion, and Nancy can choose whether she wants Dakota.
I considered Dakota.
Chris is, I can just second that.
He got that.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Oper.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Worth.
Aye.
Councilmember Worth.
Aye.
Councilmember Ashford.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. And item number five is to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten rezoning the properties at approximately, wrong one, twenty twenty five dash eleven. My page ran out of space. Rezoning the properties located approximately three fifty and four thirty two south from UR urban mixed to PF Public Facilities, and amending the zoning map accordingly. Any further comments or questions on these, counsel?
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash eleven rezoning the properties located approximately three fifty and four thirty two south Carter Lane to from UR urban mixed residential to PF Public Facilities, and amending the Clearfield City zoning map accordingly, and authorize your signature to any necessary documents.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Thompson, a second. Councilmember Worth. Any further discussion? Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Worth.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ashford.
Aye.
Councilmember Oper.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. That brings us to our communication items and not a ton to report because we were just together, you know, about a week ago. Lots going on, obviously, in the world, and a lot of things continuing to change. But we'll just keep plugging along, and we'll leave it at that tonight. Appreciate, I do appreciate all of you coming out tonight. It's not just one person to speak on, you know, but for all of you to be here, it says a lot to the City Council. We appreciate that, so. Councilmember Peterson?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I do have something for the North Davis sewer district. Even though we were flying back from DC when the meeting was going on, I did pull up some of the stuff that they were discussing at the meeting. And one of the things that they were discussing is, of course, the change in water rates. Effective, it looks like effective July first of twenty twenty seven, the the rates for residential users users or anybody inside the district boundaries is going to rise about two dollars and fifty cents to twenty six dollars and fifty cents. There also was, in addition, I'll have to follow up and ask about this, too, looking at, they've named specifically an added ADUs into some of these rates, and also along with that, you have considerations and impact fees of ADUs. So I, like I said, I'll have to do some asking about that at the meetings this Thursday. And also, a specific, a specific call out for Freeport Center. Just, it's going to be same type of fee increase of two dol- of two dollars and fifty cents to twenty six fifty from twenty four dollars. But the the specific call outs, I'm just trying to get pulled up now. It's just based off the fact that it looks like, because Freeport Center doesn't have meters for each entity inside the center and and everything's kind of collected through, we we meter it and then we we pass, we pass along the meter into the district. They're just looking at, making sure that they they capture as much water as they can in that regard and and sewer that they use, and and just make sure the fees are done accordingly, and then that the fees will be remitted monthly to the Freeport Center as found per the increase. And so that's that's all I really have to report today.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ashford?
So Chief B Craft went to inspect the ambulance that is going to be arriving next week for the new fire department, and I'm pretty excited about that, to have some new equipment. It's been years coming. The second thing is April seventeenth is going to be the Great Utah Shakeout, so I encourage you all to practice your skills when it comes to any earthquake because we are way overdue. And then the last one would probably be the Citizen Police Academy. You wanted to know about the police and how they actually manage. There's actually a training that happens once a week, and I think it's starting in June of the next one. So if you are interested, that would be a great class to take. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Worth?
The only thing I have is, last week I got to tour We Race and Waters facility up in Leighton, and it kind of jogged my memory that I've got a lot of inquiry from residents over the last year about why Clearfield's not listed on the Flip Your Strip program. And I got some clarification. They've rolled out a full landscape lawn exchange program, so for anybody who can take advantage of not only their parkship or their whole lawn, you can get a rebate from the Conservancy District up to two dollars and fifty cents per square foot. So Clearfield's still eligible, just on a on a larger scale, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Now they do it, now that I've converted my yard.
It makes you feel better. I'm in the process.
They they knew, I just, yeah, I just wanted to finish and, yeah. All right, Councilmember Oper?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Staff reports, do you?
Just a couple items for the council to be aware of. Tomorrow morning, we're doing a little thank you breakfast with our legislators. FYI, so, yeah, just session's over. We appreciate their work. And next week, I'll be out of the office at the Utah City Managers Conference and then the Utah League of Cities Conference. A couple of others will be attending with me to the City Managers Conference, so you can reach us, we just won't be here.
Okay. Manson?
We don't have a meeting next week, but plan on work session, policy session the following week. And then, as we kind of discuss in the budget meetings, the end of the month, Tuesday, would have budget work session, possibly the first one in May.
Okay, any other staff reports? Eric?
Just a quick reminder and invitation to the Egg Hunt on the nineteenth of April. We'll be at Steed and Fisher, both, on the nineteenth, from nine forty five to ten fifteen. We could use two of you to announce and and start the countdown, if you're willing. I know, Mayor, you're usually there.
I'll be there at Fisher.
If we we could use one. If, we could use one more, so if you're interested, let me know. We'll make sure. Are the egg dives or that afternoon, or no, I guess one's in the morning at 10:30 at the Aquatic Center and the other's at 1:30 in the afternoon. And then the following week, the 25th, is at 10:00 AM at Kiwanis will be the Arbor Day activity. Just want to invite you all to that as well. Thank you.
We have a skate park ribbon coating on May 10th?
May 19th.
May 19th.
Yeah, we're, the Parks and Rec Commission is heading that up and planning that event, but it's, it's growing. And so we're scrambling to be finished and get the landscaping done afterwards, but we'll make it.
Just figured you should have that on your calendar, just in case you want to be there.
Thanks for that reminder. I appreciate that.
Eric, Arbor Day, 17th.
It's May 17th.
May 17th. I said the 19th, but the 19th is the egg hunt this month, not next. And Arbor Day is the 25th of this month, not next month.
Thank you, Eric. Were there any other staff reports? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn their policy session or reconvene in our work session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone.